Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the board meeting. I'll call the game to order. And Chris, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its every power and for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with which I am proud.
Again, welcome, everyone. We will start with the approval of tonight's agenda.
Let me introduce a motion to approve the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two regular board meeting agenda.
Okay, all in favor? All right.
We can present a motion to approve the October third, twenty twenty-two regular board meeting minutes.
Okay. All in favor? I like that. You know, it looks like that's all right. We're ready to sue the battery report, Jana. Welcome.
Happy birthday, Shae. Mrs. Coleman's Spanish for classes doing a dinner on Mexico's holiday, the day of death. They're exploring the cultural diffusion of this holiday as it is a blend of pagan Aztec traditions and Catholic traditions as it relates to death in the afterlife. They watched the Disney Pixar movie Coco in Spanish and have been discussing the pros and cons of Disney's depictions of other cultures and cultural appropriation. Lots of great discussion around culture diversity appreciation versus appropriation, and of course, vocab learning. There will be a lunch and learn tomorrow, October eighteenth, with the campus construction management.
Oh.
Um, the JV varsity girls volleyball is at Avon as a home game against Rochester Prep. I just got word that the JV won and that the varsity is playing right now. And the pep band actually had so much fun at the game on Friday, even though our football team may not have one. It was a close game and everyone was on the edge of their seats and lots of playing happened, which is really fun. Any questions?
Very important, no? Thank you. Uh, Jamie? The middle school?
Yep, sixth and seventh grade art classes just sixth and eighth grade art classes just completed animations for the first time. There are videos posted on the GCS art social media pages if anyone's interested in checking them out. Mrs. Coleman, Mr. Groutman, Mr. Antonucci, and Mr. Wagner are all participating in a Bills month, which they wear Bills apparel each day for the whole month of October. Most modified sports are finishing up their season with only a few meets or games left. The modified winter sports will be starting next Monday. And the middle and high school student council wanted to recognize you for all of the hard work you do. Please enjoy this poster signed by students and a cookie cake that says thank you on it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Enjoy.
Oh, we will indeed. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Certainly in honor of school board recognition, we did one of um, district office just wanted to recognize the Board of Education as well. There's lots and lots of late nights and um difficult decisions and this board always has first and foremost students and our families at the forefront of those decisions. So thank you all for what you do every day. And Kathy, school board. And with that, we can welcome our high school low brass.
Whoa.
While they're standing up behind me, this is indeed our high school low brass section. Uh, I've got Daphne, Harry, Noah Brody, Caroline, Sam, and Raphael. Uh, the tune tonight comes to us from English composer named Gustav Holst. Uh, Holst played many instruments, but his solo instrument was trombone, so it seemed appropriate. Uh, this is from a suite of music written between nineteen fourteen and nineteen seventeen called The Planets. Uh, the inspiration for Holst was each of the known planets in the solar system at the time. And this will be a corral from Jupiter. Don't enjoy.
That's good.
And Katie Pearson will be performing at one scene four from Disney's The Little Mermaid.
So you just improv? Do you want things bought? I got twenty. But who cares? No big deal. I want more. I wanna be where the people are. I wanna see, wanna see 'em dancing, walking around on those, what do you call? Oh, feet. Flipping your fins, you don't get too far. Legs are required for jumping, dancing, walking around on those, what's the word again? Street. Up where they walk, up where they run, up where they stay all day in the sun, wandering free. Wish I could be part of that world. What would I give if I could be part of these waters? What would I make to spend a day warm on this land? Bet young men, they don't understand, bet they don't reprimand their daughters. Bright young women, sick of swimming, ready to stand. Yeah, you're ready to know what the people know. Ask your questions and get some answers. What's a fire and what is a world? Burn, burn, when it's my kind of morning I love. I'm exploring this whole world. Out of the sea. Wish I could be part of that world.
I don't think there's anything that I can speak to um, the pride of our students being so successful and so talented. So that was, I have goosebumps.
Yeah.
Do we want to take a break and have some cake and cupcakes?
Absolutely.
Any of the families want some cupcakes?
Yeah, help yourself. Are you running all day, right?
So if you've ever caught one?
I gotta work with that. Of course.
There's plenty. You can take one of each or two of each, whatever. That's the challenge. This really isn't a treat, it's a challenge.
Allison, everybody loves you.
That's all right. I'm diverse. You sure? Allison? I'm good, thank you. Okay. No calories, right? None. All the sugar and carbs take great out of those. Absolutely. You just trying to get it in slideshow mode or?
I don't know why it's not going to full screen.
I think we can choose on that computer over there. That is on there, that is the objective. The best thing is not changing, we're changing that one, Sharon. But I'm feeling like that's what it has to be. I don't, I really don't know, but I'm just looking and thinking that that's not changing when yours is, so I just there we go. Allison. Now we can ask coordinator, Chi Kimira.
But he uh, he actually
Okay, I don't know what you did there. Did we both do that at the same time?
He doesn't
Now I don't know which one's doing it. Well, it's up, it's up. We, we have the board presentation up and ready.
Okay.
Another acknowledgement of Board of Education recognition. Again, thank you for all that you do. We truly appreciate all the support for our programs and our students. And um, people have mentioned that we had senior nights. So last Friday, we had our high school cheerleaders. We had our football and it was especially wonderful to celebrate and have Julian Huffman um, on the field to celebrate his senior night. He's making an incredible recovery and just so thankful that, that he was able to be there. We also had the first time ever our pep band and um, it sounded like a college campus. It was a lot of fun, but then it really seemed to um, just really increase the school spirit. It was, it was very fun and yeah.
Is there talk of that in, 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 you know, increasing other games too, like try to hit all sports?
So that was something that Mr. Shalina had said he wanted to do was to increase um, the opportunities. I don't know what the exact plan is, but we're off.
We set the college pep band play hockey games when I coached and they would use it as a practice time and it was awesome. Yeah.
We've also had our senior nights for boys soccer and girls soccer. Um, in my updates for um, upcoming events, I'll talk about the other senior nights that we will have later this week. Okay, a large gym. All the steel is installed. The painters were there today taping it off. The plan, the hope, pray, cross your fingers, um, do whatever you can to have good vibes sent that they will have that painted and ready for senior night for volleyball on Friday. That is what we're really pushing for. The volleyball team has been beyond um, patient and flexible with the schedule this year and just really hoping that we can show them uh, this gesture of honoring their, their flexibility and having them play their last senior game in our gym. So hopefully it's working. Yeah, out of order, that's okay. Um, we'll come back to some more building updates. So you may or may not have heard about the New York State healthcare and mental health worker bonus. And what it is, the Department of Health will pay up to three thousand dollars for these positions. And there is attestation forms that we as an employer have to complete as well as the employee has to complete. There's a minimum number of hours that needed to be worked. There are vesting periods, so they give you timeframes on when they had, when these roles had to be working in your school district. The one area that we are um, unsure of is the school counselors because counselors are listed in the New York State healthcare mental health workers as an eligible employee. But when you look up what type of counselors, it gets into drug and alcohol and other specific counselors. And right now, school counselors are not listed, so we're waiting on um, guidance from our school attorney. One of the things we have to be careful of is that if we were to um, confirm that one of these titles of um, qualifies for this bonus and then later on, the department helps us, they don't, then we would be responsible for paying that bonus and set up department bill. So it's, it's important that we work through this with our, our school attorneys. Oh, that's a bit. We'll roll with it. Um, school safety, later on, we um, talked about in our policy meetings, school safety board policies. Every year, we are required to have twelve drills. Eight of those drills need to be completed by December thirty-first. Eight drills are evacuation drills, meaning fire, um, fire drills. Four will be lockdown drills. And as of today, we have completed the required eight drills this fall. What we also do is after a shelter in place or a lockdown drill, the administrative team does debrief. And then we then talk about how to help um, incorporate some of the things that we noticed needed to change in our drills. Um, today was not a scheduled evacuation drill. However, I can tell you that it went very smoothly. Um, it was during an elementary lunch and um, students were all out safely in the parking lot and accounted for. So it is the reason we practiced them and I was, I was pleased with how everyone did. Wow. Well, this was an opportunity for us to talk about the board goals that um, are, are here. Um, in very small print in front of you, we do have the Board of Education goals. And with the board goals, again, these are the goals that you as a board of education are responsible for implementing. So um, I'll briefly talk about it. I don't know, Mike, if you want to share anymore. I know there was a lot of work and conversation with the board members about developing these five broad areas. I'll just go over the broad areas and I'll let Mr. Schnell, I'll talk a little bit more. So the five gold areas would be policy oversight, strategic planning, board development, fiscal responsibility, and community leadership.
Well, yeah, so I think I think the key point to make is we're working toward aligning the district goals and the board goals. And that is the real goal that we're working effectively the same and focus. The board is more long-term, more oversight and um, but certainly tactically focused and um, the day-to-day operations and so on. So from that perspective, I think they're, they're in alignment with the categories. Um, board and district goals always going to get updated as, as time progresses. I think we've got a little bit more work to do probably in, in some areas over here in the measures. It's not up here, Allison, this. We have, you know, pretty much the goal, the actions. Who will work on them? And then the metrics from there. So and then we'll have periodic, periodic reviews as we go forward into twenty twenty-three. So right now, I think it's, it's a, it's a good start. The majority of board members have weighed in and provided their insights. We've met the other day and I think for now we're ready to get ready.
So what we'll do um, at the next board meeting is we will have the board goals. Um, where we actually see them up on the, in the PowerPoint presentation, but then you can adopt those. And you know, one of the pieces that I'm excited about is having a spot on our website that will show what our board goals are, but then also how the progress that we're making towards those goals. So that, you know, when, when we receive feedback about increasing our transparency, this is one way to absolutely do that is to really show um, our community. This is what we said we would do and we would show that. I will also bring the draft district goals at the next meeting to adopt the board goals, draft district goals. And again, the difference between board goals and district goals, the district goals are, are the goals that you hold me as superintendent accountable for to oversee in, in the district. So we'll, we'll have those presented as well.
What do you think the timeframe is for the focus groups and the groups that are working on the strategic planning? To get finalized, because our, our dates on the right here is the approval by December twenty-fifth, June. And then probably by February, February three. Do you think those will line up with what the groups are working on?
Yeah.
For us to look at and then analyze and give you that.
Yeah, so those groups have met twice. The, um, each of the goal areas have met twice with their focus groups. The initial meeting and then a follow-up. They have developed recommended objectives and activities. So the next step is for the admin team to review the objective and activities. Then they'll go to our consultant, bring back the entire strategic planning committee to review. And, and then it's bring the draft to the board and move forward. So we're, despite COVID, we're, we're moving forward. Um, upcoming events, let's see if I can do this for memory.
Thank you for pulling this format together and one.
It looked really good in the fourth. Um, so upcoming events, we have cross-country senior night tomorrow night. Um, like I said, hopefully Friday night we'll have our senior night for our volleyball players. Um, the trunk or treat for PTSA with the twenty-eighth. Half-day is also on the twenty-eighth. And then on November tenth, we are having an early dismissal relocation drill. So we, um, the drill will start at one and what we will do is we will um, shelter in place. And then we will relocate to the bus garage. Then we will dismiss, um, have students report back to the school and then dismiss. So they will go home fifteen minutes early, but the, that whole drill will start at one. We just make sure they make that bet.
So November tenth?
November tenth. So the pictures of the building project, um, what I wanted to show was there's, they have the firewall completed. So um, and it's gigantic. And when you, if you could see it, they have the, the hole cut out for the door that you'll enter the gym. And it just, that wall is, is incredible. And the best part is it's straight and it's sturdy and um, it's been a, you know, do what it's supposed to. They up, they did.
Yeah.
Um, they've also replaced that weight-bearing wall that was three and a half inches. Um, I had side-by-side pictures of that just because the, the difference is incredible. I mean, just in pictures, you see, you know, one wall like this and then you see a twelve-inch block wall. Um, so it's, it's coming along. It's slow because of its, its mason areas, pouring footers, you know, black walls are being built. So it's, it's not fast construction, um, but still it's, it's exciting to see the progress from time to time. And let us know if you'd like to tour the site again. Okay. Wear boots, it's money. So. Any questions? Can we shut it off here? Yeah, but I got it, yeah. I just don't know.
There we are. Black and white? There we are.
You can't figure out why their cameras in black and white to make fun of them. It's like we're in a
That should be a setting in the time of film.
So we're good to go ahead.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your report. Community relations, anyone sign up? No? Okay, then we'll go right to community reports. Mike?
We postponed tonight's meeting to November seventh, fifteenth, the meeting of the next month. And we're kind of an increasing agenda where we haven't met the last two times. Um, we could meet at five fifteen and go to six forty-five, please. Is that okay? Okay with you then?
We'll see if the auditors can come to that meeting.
Thank you. Uh, Policy, we did meet tonight and uh, um, along the lines Policy, we did meet tonight, and along the lines of one of our goals, we're making great headway in policies. So Sherry showed us the, how much we've done so far, and it's about an inch and a half big. So we're moving right along on that. We've got a first read tonight on items one through nine. And the, be the second read on items 10 through 16. All required policies.
No, 10 through 16, that was just our, that was the committee's first read, so they'll be on for next time.
Gotcha.
10 through 16 are.
Next time.
So you have the first.
Next time, okay. Okay, if anybody have any questions on any of those, we'll, we'll try to answer them. The clerk is really busy. She's got a lot on her plate.
GCF does have a proposal, and once again, the elementary school is bringing the pumpkin patch here. We did that originally during COVID when we weren't allowed to do any field trips, and it has just been such a positive experience for our students that we're going to continue to do it. And it's just, it's fun to watch the students go and pick the pumpkins, and they'll pick the different ones, you know, it's not always the biggest ones, sometimes it's just a little cute one, but it's a nice event. So just thankful for GCF's consistent efforts.
So we'll go right to personnel.
Okay, under personnel, I'd like to entertain a consent motion for items 7.02 to 7.10.
Question, comments on any of those?
Do I need to abstain or some colleague?
Oh, okay, sure.
Do what then? Do 7.02 to 7.07? And just in regards to discussion, 7.03 is the retirement of Michael Moore. He certainly has been a steadfast of our cleaning staff here at Geneseo, and he will be missed at one wishing, while I'm taken for his many years of, of service to the Geneseo Central School District.
Okay, so we'll do the whole, and then Kathy can abstain.
On that one, yeah.
Okay. Then all in favor, all right? Anyone opposed? And one of extension. Thank you.
Okay, and under new business. We contain a consent motion for items 8.02 through 8.11.
Second. Questions on any of those?
No questions, but, but I guess. It, it's, these were all short, it's like my, my, it's real long. It'd be possible just to have a, hit the highlights, what changed between old version, new version.
Yeah, some of the longer policies, when we get into the, so you can see that we're going quickly through some of the parts of the required policies, the Board of Education responsibilities, the district. But those are more simple policies. When we get into the student policies, they're more in-depth, and yes, we'll have to really, that will take more time, but also we can tell you the changes.
Even just, yeah, whatever, easy to make.
Good idea. Okay. Other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, aye. Anyone opposed? unanimous, thank you. And business office?
Under the business office, entertain a motion to 9.02.
Yep.
Second. Questions on that one?
Thank you to our very generous community members who are counseling, donating, donating to help our programs.
Donating, right? Put the in a model today for this. Oh, nice. Oh, nice, yeah, yeah.
Great, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All right, aye, anyone opposed? unanimous, thank you. Second session, okay.
So we're going, entertain a motion, we're going to the executive session for contract negotiation.
All in favor, all right, aye. Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right. Good night.
We can do now my PowerPoint and see the information that.
Not again.